I now call the July 19, 2022, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Bailey will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we're able to enjoy living here in this wonderful city of Riverton, Wyoming. Please bless us in all that we do on City Council, that we may act in the best interest of all of the citizens of the city of Riverton, and that we will take into mind all of the important duties that we have and hold them responsibly. Please make sure everyone is safe, especially our police, emergency responders, firemen, that they will be able to perform the duties, keeping us all safe and with safety to themselves also. We ask you bless this meeting and bless all of us as we travel home tonight. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristi Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Cox from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The motion passes. I declare a quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Pronto has the second. Any council discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other item may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chessie Lee, a resident of Riverton and a homeowner here. I am also the co-chair of the Riverton Peace Mission that was founded in the summer of 2019. First, I would like to announce the Eighth Annual Riverton Peace March and Rally that is on Saturday, August 6. As you recall, this march started by Ron Howard is in commemoration of the shooting by a city employee in 2015 of two Northern Arapahoe men at the detox center at the Center of Hope. The march will begin at Centennial Park across from the Center of Hope, gathering at 9:30 AM and continuing along Main Street on the sidewalks to the Riverton City Park where there will be speakers, music, and I might also mention that there's going to be an open mic, so anyone who wants to come and speak is welcome to come and do that. And so for more information, people can go to the Riverton Peace Mission website or Facebook page. Secondly, I have seen reports that Tony Toystedt is resigning as the city administrator of Riverton. I'm sorry to know that you are leaving, but wish you well in your new position in Tennessee. Tony had met with representatives of the Riverton Peace Mission a few times recently to discuss issues of concern, and I appreciated his willingness to take time to listen. I am asking if there is a plan for the process of hiring his replacement, and want to suggest that since Riverton is a border town of the Wind River Indian Reservation, that the process include Native Americans in the selection process, and to choose someone who has these qualifications. One, positive experience in having worked in a reservation border town. Knowledge and understanding of tribal issues and empathy for Indigenous people. The ability to address racial bias, discrimination, and police accountability. Can obtain the resources and means for ongoing resolution of conflicts, such as restoring the Solutions Committee that was formed in 2013 and the ombudsman position that was established in 2015 by the then-chief of police in response to the shooting at the Center of Hope. I look forward to the City Council's response now or in the near future, and I can be reached by email at chessie@rivertonpeacemission.org. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. We appreciate your information. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Carl, were you at that point of public comment? Did you have any public comment you wanted to?
Yes, I don't know if you have time for my presentation on the National Night Out.
I don't think so tonight, but possibly. If you would like to give a small presentation of what you have planned, we would be glad to listen to that and get the dates so the public has it.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Falcon, and I live in Precinct 3-4. Mayor Gard invited me to come tonight to briefly tell you a little about what we've been doing with the National Night Out. If you're not familiar with that, you may be familiar with the Town Watch Program. That was organized by the National Sheriff's Association to help reduce crime in neighborhoods through building a partnership between the local community and local law enforcement. I've taken that a step further. I've been doing the National Night Out here. This will be the third year I've been doing that in my precinct. And I've not only been involving law enforcement, which includes the Riverton PD, but also the Sheriff's Department and the Wyoming State Troopers. What we do is we have a sort of like a community picnic. We have games. We have activities. We invite vendors to come and also meet with the community, and we try to provide information and opportunities for the community to build relationships with local law enforcement.
I now call the July 19, 2022, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Bailey will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we're able to enjoy living here in this wonderful city of Riverton, Wyoming. Please bless us in all that we do on City Council, that we may act in the best interest of all of the citizens of the city of Riverton, and that we will take into mind all of the important duties that we have and hold them responsibly. Please make sure everyone is safe, especially our police, emergency responders, firemen, that they will be able to perform the duties, keeping us all safe and with safety to themselves also. We ask you bless this meeting and bless all of us as we travel home tonight. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristi Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Cox from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The motion passes. I declare a quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Pronto has the second. Any council discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other item may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Chessie Lee, a resident of Riverton and a homeowner here. I am also the co-chair of the Riverton Peace Mission that was founded in the summer of 2019. First, I would like to announce the 8th Annual Riverton Peace March and Rally that is on Saturday, August 6th. As you recall, this march started by Ron Howard is in commemoration of the shooting of, by a city employee in 2015 of two Northern Arapahoe men at the detox center, at the Center of Hope. The march will begin at Centennial Park across from the Center of Hope, gathering at 9:30 AM and continuing along Main Street on the sidewalks to the Riverton City Park where there will be speakers, music, and might also mention that there's going to be an open mic, so anyone who wants to come and speak will, is welcome to come and do that. And so for more information, people can go to the Riverton Peace Mission website or Facebook page. Secondly, I have seen reports that Tony Toystedt is resigning as the city administrator of Riverton. I'm sorry to know that you are leaving, but wish you well in your new position in Tennessee. Tony had met with representatives of the Riverton Peace Mission a few times recently to discuss issues of concern, and I appreciated his willingness to take time to listen. I am asking if there is a plan for the process of hiring his replacement and want to suggest that since Riverton is a border town of the Wind River Indian Reservation, that the process include Native Americans in the selection process and to choose someone who has these qualifications. One, positive experience in having worked in a reservation border town, knowledge and understanding of tribal issues and empathy for indigenous people, the ability to address racial bias, discrimination, and police accountability, can obtain the resources and means for ongoing resolution of conflicts such as restoring the Solutions Committee that was formed in 2013 and the ombudsman position that was established in 2015 by the then-chief of police in response to the shooting at the Center of Hope. I look forward to the city council's response now or in the near future, and I can be reached by email at chessy@rivertonpeacemission.org. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. We appreciate your information. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Carl, we're at that point of public comment. Did you have any public comment you wanted to?
Yes, if you have time for my presentation on the National Night Out.
I don't think so tonight, but possibly, if you would like to give a small presentation of what you have planned, we would be glad to listen to that and get the dates so the public has it.
I can hand these out to the councilors, some information on National Night Out.
Thank you.
So Mayor Gard invited, I'm...
I'm Carl Falcon, and I live in Precinct 34. Mayor Gard invited me to come tonight to briefly tell you a little about what we've been doing with the National Night Out. If you're not familiar with that, you may be familiar with the Town Watch program. That was organized by the National Sheriff's Association to help reduce crime in neighborhoods through building a partnership between the local community and local law enforcement. I've taken that a step further. I've been doing the National Night Out here. This will be the third year I've been doing that in my precinct. And I've not only been involving law enforcement, which includes the Riverton PD, but also the Sheriff's Department and the Wyoming State Troopers. What we do is we have a, sort of like a community picnic. We have games, we have activities. We have, we invite vendors to come and also meet with the community, and we try to provide information and opportunities for the community to build relationships with local law enforcement and other first responders. This year it will be August 2nd. That's the first Tuesday in August. From my brief discussion with the mayor, I understand the city is also interested in a Town Watch program. This is a great way to let the community know about that. And since I've been doing it in my neighborhood, I would like to take this opportunity this year, since I have not yet selected a venue, to see if there's something we can do to coordinate it between the entire city and not just my neighborhood. So are there any questions on the program?
No, we appreciate that information. There's that, we have another concerned citizen that is scheduling a meeting. He had one scheduled for the 14th, and I believe he's changed that to the 28th. That's what I was told today was, did he reserve any room, Kristen, or anybody heard from him? Have we heard from Greg?
Yes, sir.
So Carl, I would suggest that you find time to attend that. Is that from 7 till 9? And bring your information and share it with that group and see if we can't combine.
Would that be here?
It would be in this building.
On the 28th?
On the 28th, at 7 to 9 o'clock.
Your Honor, I'll be there as well. I will be there as well.
Yeah. Chief said he would be there, and I'll do my best to be there also.
Okay. Well, the timing is close. We've got less than two weeks before the date. If anything, if the city can do anything to try to promote this event and help me pick a central venue, I would really appreciate that.
You know, I don't know that that's our job, but somebody should help. So we're trying to, we're trying to help that neighborhood watch get put together, and we'd like your help to do that. So I don't know that we can't do that all at that one spot. Maybe we could use, we could ask for Veterans Park or something that we could have that. And your activity is on August 2nd?
Yes, that's the national date for the event.
So Chief, could we get some officers to attend that by chance?
Your Honor, I doubt it. That's the week of fair.
That is fair week.
That's our, literally our busiest week that we have.
Okay. So let's, let's work on this and see what we can do to get that around that hurdle and see what we can do. On the 28th, we'll have hopefully more people interested in that, in that conversation, and maybe we can get some help.
Okay. Then we'll talk about that.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, can you maybe give him the gentleman's name to get ahold of that's trying? Because he's starting from square one, just needing ideas.
I can give you his phone number even. It's Greg Talibot, and his... If I can operate.
I've been involved in the Town Watch program for over 10 years, so I'll be glad to share with him what I know.
Tisha may have already shared that information, Your Honor. Tisha may have already shared that information.
I can do that to him along with my card so we can schedule a car reservation.
Do you have something to write with?
Your Honor.
Carl, okay.
Do you have it?
Um, Your Honor, you probably don't want to give that number out. Okay.
We'll try to connect you guys if you want to share your number with Tisha, and she can share it with him. So you guys, we aren't giving numbers out.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And I emailed the mayor a more lengthy presentation on the subject. If you would share it with the rest of the council, that might be a good idea.
Very possible. We'll see what we can do. Okay?
I had 10. That's many that I got.
All right. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We'll move on then to item eight. Consent agenda items. Would the city clerk please read consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, July 5, 2022, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, July 5, 2022, executive session meeting. Approval of the minutes, July 19, 2022, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for July 19, 2022. An approval of the municipal court report for the month of June 2022.
Thank you. Are there any my audience requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, this evening, the finance committee met and voted to approve the claims in the amount of $283,389.41. They loaned credit card in the amount of $2,149.65. Manual checks in the amount of $4,478.78. And payroll liabilities for $7,122 in the amount of $230,258.22. That's a total of $520,276.06.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. Any further council discussion?
Your Honor, all of state, many claims paid to traveling computers or YONET.
Same for Bailey addresses items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes. Retirement recognition for Dale Bartlett. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Honor. This is one of those bittersweet moments, but it's a great moment to recognize one of our employees and celebrate their career with us. And Dale, if I could have you come up and also your wife, if you're willing to do that as well. Dale has been with the city for 25 years and has had a very successful and wonderful, wonderful career. To give you a brief recap, Dale started with us in 1997 as a sanitation operator. Shortly thereafter, in 2003, he transferred over to the Streets and Alley subdivision. From there, his skill grew and obviously his expertise grew and was put into a leadership position in 2014 as the Lance Division Foreman. He's now finishing his career as the Operation Division Supervisor, and we're very proud of the commitment he's given to the city. I'm very grateful personally for his commitment. And I'll be honest, we put a lot of time and energy into thinking about the appropriate retirement gift for someone that has put so much into the city. You know, more importantly, we really wanted to give Dale something that appropriately prepared him for this new and exciting adventure in his life. And that was something I couldn't do alone, so I'd like to invite my peers up and help recognize, because they helped put toward this thought to make sure that we gave Dale the right thing for retirement.
Dale, I know you're going to miss driving the city equipment, and I'd like to present you with the first piece of equipment for your personal fleet.
So Dale, just so you know, I hear a lot, a lot of people that say they get bored when they get retired, so I want to make sure that you don't get bored. So I'm going to give this to you to do plenty of work around the house.
Thank you.
Dale, I think the first time I ever met you, you were working one of these, and so it's very possible. I wouldn't want you to get out of practice, and it's neat that they gave me the smallest one to give you, but best of luck and enjoy it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dale, just so that you can always stay in touch with us and us in touch with you, here's your own phone.
He didn't know that he'd have to bring a cart with him tonight, but apparently you do. Your Honor, counsel, honestly, after a 25-year career, there's no way for me to highlight all of the things Dale has done. His fingerprints are throughout the city of Riverton. Whether it's on the road you drive on, whether it's on the drainage that you appreciate, whether it's the lighting that we see around town, Dale has been involved in everything. That's something, Dale, you should be proud of. That's what civil service is all about, is making a difference in your community. More importantly, it's something that we as a community and a staff are grateful for. Congratulations on a successful career. Dale is respected by his peers. He's a hard worker. I mean, even his peer supervisors are here tonight to support him and lament that you're leaving us. But I'd like to also give Brian an opportunity to speak if you wouldn't mind indulging me just because Brian has directly supervised Dale for a little bit.
Dale broke me in on the, in the program. Showed me the ropes, and I'm still learning stuff from Dale all the time, so I'm, we're very fortunate to have this phone available. I can reach out to him if I have a question. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you.
This is your real retirement gift. All right. Dale, thank you so much, and I know the council would appreciate the opportunity to shake your hand.
I'd just like to say thanks for the city and the council to give me the opportunity for the career that I had. It's been a good one. I've enjoyed it. 25 years went by pretty quick. I'm going to celebrate with the retirement thing out at the lake, and at the same time, I'd like to tell you that we're also going to celebrate our 40th anniversary at the same time. So thank you all.
Come, let your wife have all that equipment and come.
Don't worry.
Careful, it's heavy.
Congratulations.
Congrats, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We'll move on to the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 audit report. Finance Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wyoming Statute 16-4-121 requires all first-class cities to have an annual certified public accountant audit of all funds. Entities required to have a CPA audit must at minimum report their annual financial condition and results of operation in conformity with government auditing standards. For fiscal year 2021, the auditors with the firm BDO USA LLP performed a number of tests pertaining to our internal controls and measured for compliance with certain provisions pursuant to contracts, grant agreements, leases, laws, regulations, et cetera. It is the responsibility of the staff and management to comprise the financial statements for the city of Riverton. However, it is the auditor's responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on the audit. And I'd like to introduce Abby Hagerman, our engagement partner of BDO USA LLP, via phone to present the results of the audit.
Thank you so much, Mia. Thank you, Mayor Gard, and members of council. I just want to make sure that everyone can hear me.
We're good, I think. Can the audience hear? We're good.
Okay, perfect. So yes, thank you and good evening. We have completed our audit of the financial statements as of before the year ended, June 30, 2021. As Mia mentioned, our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and government auditing standards. The objective of an audit is to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance, as to whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. An audit can't provide absolute assurance because otherwise I would just sit next to Mia and every member of her staff all day, every day, looking at every transaction that they go through. So instead, we do our audit based on a risk-based approach. Areas that are maybe more complex or more subject to estimates, we would look at more closely. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and we released our report on July 11th. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion that you can receive in a financial statement audit. In addition to a financial statement audit, because the city of Riverton expends more than $750,000 in federal funding during fiscal year 21, we did perform and plan an audit over the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and considered the city's internal controls over compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on its major programs and to determine whether our auditing procedures were perform, auditing, our auditing procedures, excuse me, such a mouthful, our auditing procedures for the purpose of expressing our opinion on the compliance over those direct and material compliance requirements. Management's cooperation was excellent. We received full access to all the information that we requested while performing our audit, and we acknowledged the full cooperation extended to us by all levels of city of Riverton personnel throughout the course of our work. At this time, I would open the floor to any questions that members may have.
The peers were good.
Fair enough. Short and sweet, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, wonderful. Thank you so much. We really do appreciate your time and your efforts in getting us taking care of and across the finish line. So if there aren't any other questions, I'll turn it back over to Mia and the council.
Thank you very much. Mia?
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
The Chair would entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 audit report.
So moved.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. Councilman Pronto has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of bid award for a half-ton pickup trucks, two. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And if you don't mind, I'd appreciate if Brian went through this. He and Dan Adcock put a lot of work into these bids, and it's appropriate. I think they present to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. The first bid award that I'd like to go over is on the two half-ton four-wheel-drive work trucks.
Looks like we're getting our money's worth out of you. Last time I saw you, you were sitting in front of a backhoe.
Yes.
This afternoon, and so now you have to buy the trucks?
Yeah, well, they actually let me on the backhoe today.
I appreciate that. Talk about hard work. There it is.
This, this time of year, historically, we've been able to piggyback off the state of Wyoming's bid awards, but with the crazy world of auto, the auto industry right now, we really haven't had the fortune of being able to piggyback off anything this season. So with the absence of a piggyback, we had to go with our own bid awards or advertisements for bids. The first bid we have is for the two half-ton work trucks. We opened that bid on July 13th, had two bidders, both Fremont Motor Companies, one Fremont Chevy, Buick, and GMC, in the total bid amount of $78,254, or an individual price of $39,127. The second bidder, Fremont Motor, Ford, the total bid was $93,925.52, with the unit price of $46,962.76. The council budgeted $72,000 for this project, and these were based on early estimates before dealer pricing was out or available to us. So as you can see by the report, we are short $6,254, which, this early in the year, I would like to say we can probably absorb that in capital, but it's too early to tell. And if we can't, we probably would absorb that out of operations budgets.
Okay. We appreciate that report. Anything else?
I've got one more report on a, I don't know if you want to vote on it individually or...
We'll get to that. Crack Sealer?
Yes.
Let us do our work and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two 2023 Chevy The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two 2023 Chevy half-ton work trucks in the amount of $78,254 to Fremont Chevy, Buick, GMC, and Riverton, Wyoming. So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Veronto has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of bid award for the crack sealer. Public Works, Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I again appreciate it if Brian could present to you. Again, he and Dan Adcock put a lot of work on this, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Your Honor and council. This one's pretty straightforward. We advertised for bids on a new crack sealer beginning July 2nd, opening those bids on the 13th. We only had one bidder of Normont Equipment Company in the amount of $85,420, which came in $10,330 under budget. We recommend approval of that.
Super. Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one new Min Line M1 crack sealer in the amount of $85,420 to Normont Equipment Company.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilman Bailey has the second. Further discussion? Well, it appears that we're $10,000 under estimates here, right?
Right.
So it seems like you've already regained a position on the, on the pickup trucks, and we appreciate that. And I think this is a really good spot to stop and to keep the public informed that we looked at a bid for crack sealing, and in that bid, we could have bought this machine, and, and we wouldn't have had the machine. And so I commend the city staff for, for seeing that and realizing that the crack sealing machine that we did have, for, anybody got an idea how long we had that machine?
Eleven years old.
Eleven years old. And so we saved a lot of money filling cracks and potholes on our own, and I think that's apparent from, from the conversation. And so although it requires staff to run it, it has, it saved us a bunch of money. I appreciate for, I appreciate the effort to finding a new machine and, and one under budget, so. Anyone else have any comments? The Chair would entertain, ooh, if there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 22-007, first reading, reckless animal ordinance. Police Chiefs Report, please.
Your Honor, thank you very much. I will try to make this very short. So as you guys know, on July 20th, 2021, we actually passed the city ordinance, and Rick Solars, our city attorney, had noticed that there was some verbiage that needed to be changed. So what we're asking for tonight is two words to be taken out of the city ordinance, and so the words "other than" were included in the ordinance by mistake and need to be removed in order for this section of code to be enforceable. And so literally, that is all I'm asking, is that we take out the words "other than" out of the city ordinance.
I don't know, that's a lot to ask.
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Absolutely.
So, the Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing opening. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none in the audience wishing to speak, is there anyone that would like to speak? If not...
Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilman Larson has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 22-007 on first reading. So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Salisbury has the second. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I apologize for my oversight. I do need to read the ordinance by title only before you call for a vote.
How did we get that?
That was my oversight. It's not on your script tonight.
It's just not on the script. Would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 22-007 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title VI Animals, Chapter 6.08 Dogs and Cats, Section 6.08.035, reckless animal owner of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do the council, councils still want to hold their motions?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Council Committee Reports and Council Member Roundtable. Carl, would you start us off, please?
Certainly, Your Honor. I haven't had any committee meetings to attend. I do want to just say what a wonderful weekend we had last weekend. All the work that goes into that rendezvous weekend is amazing, and I just want to thank everybody for everything they do. It really, it makes me proud to be here. That's about all I've got.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Force Committee did not meet this, this month, so we did not have that, but I did attend the airport board meeting. And overall, the airport's doing very well, considering that there's sort of a national shortage of pilots and crew and all of that kind of stuff. Our, our numbers are holding pretty steady. It looks like we will not have any problem getting to our 10,000 employments for the year if the trend continues. Our new contract starts this year, I think. The costs, of course, are going up with fuel and flight time and all that kind of stuff, but we've been very well with our, our funds between our, you know, our half-cent Economic Development Fund that goes toward the airport, and so, you know, we're doing pretty well in that respect, so, doing well. Also, I got to attend the balloon rally and some of the events during the rendezvous, and again, it was wonderful. There was lots and lots of people out, and I don't know how many cars we had at the Friday Night Cruise, but there had to be hundreds. I was down on the, that end of town when they all left the Sutherland's parking lot, and I think it took them 45 minutes to leave the parking lot. I mean, there was a lot of cars there. So it was a great event, lots of people out. The balloons got to fly all three days. It was a little warm, so we only got to put one rider in the balloon instead of two. But other than that, it was, it was a wonderful day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Dean?
Hi, Your Honor. We have the Fremont County School District 25 Rec. Board meeting on the 6th of July. We actually, for the second time now, approved a preliminary budget. Interestingly, you would think that that's something that you would do every day, but it just wasn't getting done formally. So since we had our audit this last year, Jody Ray's done a great job of following up on that and making sure that all the i's are dotted and t's crossed. And in speaking of audit, I, I know that it took us about 30 seconds to approve the audit that was done, but really, it's, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that. And reading through that took me like half an hour or more, so I can only imagine how much time actually went into it in providing documentation and just going through that. And it is kind of a deep pantsing in a way. You kind of put it all out there and just let these guys comb through it and, and see if you've made a mistake. I mean, it, it's a bit like, okay, I hope we did everything right. And I just want to acknowledge Mia and her staff, and, and we do know that that's, that's just a tremendous amount of work, and it's, it's just awesome to get the, the feedback that you did. It just signifies how great you guys are.
If I may also, it is, again, I try to express that it's a team experience, and Kristin handled all of the HR payroll, the retirement audit portion of the audit, and Kyle did a tremendous amount of work in helping our projects and contracts and retainage payable, so it really is a group effort putting that together. So thank, thank, thank you all as well.
Thank you. The only other thing I was going to mention is rendezvous was great. It was just really cool to be downtown, see all those people out there. I think it was just a, a good turnout despite all the heat. And then the balloon rally was great. They kind of landed in my backyard, if you will, there at the, at the school, and we actually had one land in my, in the street in front of my house, which was kind of entertaining. It's like, what's that funny noise? Doggo's running out. I go looking, and there's a balloon right there. I could shake hands with them. I'm like, okay, how about the street? They landed in the street, and that was kind of cool. But yeah, a great time. Thanks, that's it.
Kyle?
I second my neighbor on the balloon rally. That's probably one of the first times that we haven't had wind and they were blown off course, and the heat caused fewer riders, but everybody enjoyed it. I did not attend the airport meeting. I was forced to gunpoint to go fishing at, up at Brooks Lake and listen to my braggadocious wife catch 12 fish, and I only caught three. But on July 30th, household hazardous waste, you can drop it off down at the, you can drop it off for free, and that includes used oil, Freon, ag chemicals, aerosols, lithium batteries, oil-based paints, solvents, unknown materials, prescription drugs, et cetera. So that's solid waste. And, and it says free, but we all know that's wrong, because we pay three mils on our property tax. Nothing is free, so utilize it and clean out your garage, get rid of that stuff. If you change your own oil, I'm sorry, Mike, you can take it down there and deposit it there, and they won't charge you for it, and it's a good deal. That's all, have your honor.
Thank you. Kristi?
Your Honor, I attended the chamber meeting, and I passed out little table pens for, to promote the Y Riverton website that was, that we're trying to direct traffic to that's been done, so. It's Y Riverton, W-Y Riverton dot com, so they're still working on some of the site, but it's a really nice place to go and find out what's going on in Riverton, and I second all the great things that have been going on in Riverton. I did come for the neighborhood watch and was kind of disappointed to see the sign on the wall, so I'm hoping that some things go forward with that. And I really want to express my thanks to our law enforcement and the chief for the serious incidents you guys deal with on a daily basis, and we really, really, really appreciate you guys, so.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can I take a second since she said that? So I, I just want everybody to know how much the Riverton Police Department appreciates everyone that showed up at the Friday Night Cruise for us, the police department. I had several officers come and ask me if they could work it, so, and I had several people tell me, why are there so many cops down here? And I told them, I said, they just wanted to be part of this tonight. They're not, I mean, they're working, but they're not actively working. They just wanted to be part of the Friday Night Cruise, and it was by far the best one that I have ever attended. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for that.
I will notice, though, there were fewer burnouts on Main Street. I mean, just saying.
They were.
A burnout gets a little hot, doesn't it?
But it was very impressive. The, the people down there were fantastic. It was just a great night.
It was a good time. Thanks, Chief. Tony?
Your Honor, we are on some level oddly without a lot of night meetings coming up. We do have RE-CDA coming up next Wednesday. I was, and that will be at the Sundowner, 7:00 AM on Wednesday. All are invited. It's a great group of people who, and so there's always good information at those meetings. Council will be considering the recommendation as the Edge Committee at the upcoming meeting, first meeting in August. We look forward to providing that. We had to do a little research on a couple, on how to do a couple of things, but it's, it's easy-peasy now. I was, I did have the opportunity to take part in the balloon rally in terms of, we had our exchange student that was sent home during the pandemic suddenly, didn't get to spend her whole time here, blew herself back, and she wanted to do two things, which was go to Yellowstone. The first time a pandemic stopped her, this time natural disasters tried real hard. But we did manage to get through the park for a few days and then come back for the Friday, Friday launch, and she was able to actually go up in a balloon, in the Humpty Dumpty, which was a joy to crew as well. It was a real great group. Your Honor, I would echo the comments of the individuals on council and those who have said so before, the great work of the team to my left, to my right, behind me on the budget, not the budget, the, the audit. That's an insane amount of work, and we're getting back to it. It took a little longer this year. That's not on our staff. That's, it's, it's not. They provided all the information in the time they were required to provide, and they provided good information. And it's, it always amazes me to see all the boxes of stuff we have to pull for that. So many thanks to them, that's, and to see the constant good findings, or lack of findings, if you will, that's always encouraging for any community, and we should, and we should tout that as much as we can. So thank you to all that make that possible. Your Honor, with that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. I was able to have a lot of meetings in the last two weeks, and I started out with one with the police chief and Tony about wages, and I really did appreciate that meeting. I appreciate the chief for bringing that to us, and we're working on that, and we'll see what we can do there. Also, was able to meet with two council members, first meeting with, with two of those, and appreciated their input. There's also a really important meeting that, that Kyle Butterfield put on for Safe Ways to Schools for the Wind, for Willow Creek Schools. I think we had probably six or seven attendees at that, and, and that's, that's a really important thing that we would like to pay attention to. That is an opportunity to apply for a grant that would pay the majority of that cost, some $800-plus thousand dollars for sidewalk curb and gutter from the bottom of the hill on Major's Avenue around to the school. On just one side of, on the, what would be the east side and then the north side, the east side of Major's and the north side of Monroe. But it would, but it's discussing an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, which would be extremely wide for bikes, people, handicap, the whole group, so I appreciated that. There was also a meeting with the Edge Committee, which was a really kind of a tough meeting because we need to sustain the efforts of our airport, and with the price of gasoline and the costs of flying airplanes, that was, that was a good meeting to, to sit in, and I appreciate all the information that was given to the Edge Committee by staff and the help that was given there. I also was able to have meetings with senior staff, all five of those. I appreciate them making themselves available to me and, and answering the questions that I had. Then again, I was able to meet with two more council members for a sustained meeting for a length of time. I had a meeting with a citizen about the work that the city does for a couple hours. It was quite enlightening. I was able to cut weeds on Monroe and Adams. I had another meeting with the senior staff, one individual. I appreciate... I appreciated that information that I was given there. Very useful and important ways that we can, that we can do things. And so, I took the opportunity, Tony and I have done this in the past. Tony was not available, so I went down and walked through the area of the last shooting that we had on Jefferson, and I was amazed at that. You're a little bit thinking this might not be a good idea, you know? But it always turns out to be quite an opportunity. One homeowner said that he'd lived in that house that he was in for over 60 years, and that there was nothing wrong, and that he really liked the area and appreciated everything that the police did for that. I contacted a whole bunch of folks, and I only had one negative comment, and Chief, I think you've done a good job with that.
Thank you, sir.
Incident, and I appreciate that. And a lot of good things happened from that already. Lindsay's not here, but she sent two young men down to cut weeds in that neighborhood, and in doing so, exposed some graffiti on the back of a building, and Greg Talbot went right to work on that and got that removed. And then he contacted me and made arrangements to take the graffiti, paint over the graffiti on the Big O building on South Federal. And we are in the communications to paint the back of the Motel 6 and Riverton sheet metal graffiti away. And so, good conversations that we wouldn't have had if we, if he hadn't come. The reason that meeting was canceled, when he got here, he suffered from some heat stroke from being out and working and didn't feel good enough to make that meeting. So, that's been rescheduled for the 28th at 7:00 to 9:00, and we hope that we can have some, some good input and some answers to that. The other thing that, that, when it comes to the park, the real success of the park is the use of the park. And so, when I got done with walking through the area on Jefferson, I went to the farmer's market, and I came away with raw milk and raw eggs, and I've been eating fairly well since that. But the milk was so good that I had to go back to the Saturday market and get another dose. And so, I may be addicted. I may have to call the chief and see if he has a program I could enlist in. Both farmer's markets were really well-attended, and they are appreciative of the two locations that we have for them, and I think they bring a lot of commerce to town, and I really do appreciate that, and I worked my way through all of those booths and thanked those individuals for using the park. And there again, if we don't use it, someone else will. We had to chalk the walk up at the college, which was extremely successful, and with that, there was a concert to the east side. And you know, all these years, I've never seen anybody use the east side of that, that building, and there's a patio there, and the band was wonderful and a really good idea. Whoever had that idea, they should be commended. I met with all five, there's six mayors, we missed one, but I met with them in an early morning meeting and had a great discussion. I also was able to put up and take down a balloon on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I don't know, if we go back through our records, we don't have very many days when we get all three days to fly, and it was just really nice to do that. And I think Megan and Kristin researched the Glow, and I think we only have done the Glow four times before successfully.
I believe so, Your Honor.
And so, we were able to do the Glow for the fifth time out of 42 years, and I think there is probably over 1,000 people on the soccer field, and I would think there was 1,000 people or better on the car show. And so, if you're thinking there's nothing to do in Riverton, you might want to rethink that. I went from there, of course, after the Glow, I said to my wife, I think the Remax balloon is on fire. And she said, no, it's not. It's not on fire. But it did catch its envelope on fire, and so they didn't get to go up on Sunday. But he has a repair station, so he'll take care of that pretty easily. So, we went to the fireworks, which were 23 minutes long, started exactly at 10:00, and did a wonderful job, gorgeous fireworks. So, appreciated that. I also then got to cut weeds on Broadway. And then this morning, I had a very productive meeting with the 25th Superintendent Joanne Flanagan, and she asked me to come to her office and discuss a few different items. One of those was the swimming pool. They're in a budget crunch, just like the rest of us, and so I don't know that there's much help that we can give there, but it was a, it was a really good meeting, and I appreciated her willingness to discuss that with me. And so, that's, that's all I did. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to report? I think when it comes down to the rendezvous, there's a ton of work that goes into that, and Kristin takes a lot of that, and she passes it off, says that she doesn't do all that, but it really is a lot of work. She designed the pins, and they sold, do you know how many T-shirts you sold?
We sold out of them. We have to order more, so, over 200.
Over 200 T-shirts? And so, they're just, you know, the effort that's put in there, the bands, the food trucks, we ran the food trucks out of food. They're just, there just was a wonderful gathering there, and the pilots that came in were exceptionally good pilots, and we didn't have any real incidents, and they didn't get to fly a long ways. Just down to 16th Street isn't that, that far comparative to many years when we had to run to catch up to them. But the winds were calm, and we were lucky to have all that success. So, I do want to thank staff for the hard work that goes in all year long into the rendezvous committee, and so we appreciate Megan and Kristin and all the support staff that comes along with that. It was nice to see our police officers on the street. I realize that that, a lot of people don't see the importance of that, but they are a vital part of that operation, and it was nice to see them all there. It was also nice to shake hands with the veterans that were at their booth, and so they're just a great opportunity that comes from that effort. We do have an executive session, and we will adjourn into that, and for the purpose of personnel, considering appointments, employment rights, practice, dismissals, complaints, or charges against a public officer, official person, or employee in accordance with the Wyoming State Statute 16-4-405-AII, and for the purpose of considering offers and tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405-AX. The chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for that purpose.
So moved.
Councilwoman Borders has a motion, and Councilwoman Salisbury has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair invites the city attorney, Rick Solers, to come with us into executive.